I'm calling to order the Travis County Commissioners Court meeting. Judge Brown is not with us today. We hope for his quick recovery, and he will be with us next week. And so I will turn it over to the mayor to call to order the city council.
Commissioner, thank you. This is April 20th, 2021. Call to order the city council portion of the joint meeting with the Travis County Commissioners Court, 9:05, we have a quorum. Commissioner, turn it back over to you.
Great, so we called to order the joint meeting of the Commissioners Court and the City Council for the purposes of the COVID reports. And so what we will do is still follow the order that we have followed in the past few meetings. The Commissioners Court will go first with the questions, and then the City Council and the mayor. So I think we're ready to hear from Dr. Esq.
Commissioner Gomez, this is Anne Marie. Do you want to ask if there's any callers before we start the briefing?
Okay, and Larry, are there any callers?
Commissioner, there are not.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Esq.
Thank you, Commissioner. Can you all see my slides?
Yes.
Okay, let me just move it into presentation mode, and I will get started. Again, thank you to both the Commissioners Court and City Council for the updated update, you both on our COVID-19 response. I'm gonna start first with a couple of updates. I showed this pie chart last week with our progress towards herd immunity in Austin and Travis County. It's updated with the current numbers. You can see that we've got about 7% of our population who has been confirmed as a COVID case since the beginning of the pandemic. An estimated additional 13% based upon projections from UT. So a total of perhaps 20% of our population. So one in five individuals that have experienced COVID illness already. Below that, in the two green areas, you can see the fully vaccinated as well as the partially vaccinated. A total of about 41% of our population. So more than double the amount who have likely had COVID in the past have been at least partially vaccinated or fully vaccinated. That leaves about, at least 39% of our population still vulnerable. And when I say at least 39%, that's because this pie chart is assuming that there is zero overlap between people who have had COVID and people who've been vaccinated. We know that's not true. We know that there's at least some overlap between those who've had the illness and those who've been vaccinated. So this is a minimum number of vulnerable people. That 39% represents about 500,000 people. About half of those 500,000 people who haven't been vaccinated are children under the age of 16. So we've got a ways to go in terms of herd immunity. And I think the best thing that we can do as a community is to continue to sign up for vaccinations if you're 16 years old or older. Those individuals who are 16 or 17 years old can go get a Pfizer vaccine. Individuals who are 18 or older can get any of the vaccines that are currently available. The faster we can get shots in arms, the faster we can progress towards herd immunity and normalcy. So again, we've got quite a bit of work to do, but we're certainly making progress. This is a new slide which is showing you a comparison of Travis County with some other metropolitan areas in Texas. There's four different graphs here. You can see that on the left is the 16 years old and older who are fully vaccinated, followed by 16 years and older with one dose, 65 years and older, fully vaccinated, and 65 years and older with at least one dose. The one on the far left is probably the most telling as far as progress towards herd immunity. You can see that Travis County is in second place with this small group of counties, behind El Paso County, who's really leading the metropolitan jurisdictions in all of these measures. I think that's likely because of the catastrophic surge that they had in El Paso. I think the hesitancy in El Paso is going to be lower than a lot of other places because they experienced that catastrophic surge firsthand. So it's a lot closer to people. A lot more people have been personally impacted or had a family member who had COVID or died from COVID. And I think for us in Travis County, we need to take these lessons. We don't need to experience that catastrophic surge here to be motivated to get vaccine. So once again, all of us, all of our elected officials, all of our community advocates, all of our churches, all of our schools, everybody needs to be talking about vaccine so that we can push these numbers up and progress more rapidly towards that herd immunity that we all seek. Now, this is an update of our confirmed cases in Travis County. Yesterday, we reported 143 new cases with a moving average of 116. You know, for the previous several weeks, we've been oscillating around that about 100 for quite some time. We've seen that shift up. So we have a higher plateau now, and it really been oscillating between about 115 and 125 over the past week to 10 days. We, you know, did see a significant increase last week. We had a peak last Monday of about 136 on that moving average. We've seen that come down a little bit and plateau off. But again, COVID is still here. It's still spreading. We're still seeing people infected and hospitalized. And that means that we have to continue those protections, washing our hands, watching our distance, and wearing our masks. The more we can do that, the better chance we have of pushing down disease, pushing down transmission, and allowing the opportunity to get more people vaccinated. This is an update of our new admissions to the hospital. Again, you can see on the right side of this graph, we had a sudden and significant increase in our admissions to the hospital Friday and Saturday. Saturday, or sorry, Friday, we had 37 admissions, which was more than double the moving average. So a significant shift. Saturday, we were 50% above the moving average with 30 admissions. Now luckily, Sunday and Monday, we've seen that number come down to 20 and 12 respectively on those two days. But we'll obviously need to be closely monitoring this situation as we have lost significant ground that we had gained in the previous couple of weeks. Again, more evidence that the disease is still here, it's still spreading. There's still 500,000 plus individuals vulnerable, so we have to maintain our caution. This is an update of our hospitalizations. Again, the blue is the total hospital beds being utilized, the orange ICU beds, the gray are ventilator beds. Our hospitalizations yesterday were 144 with a moving average of 138. That moving average has been increasing for four days in a row. So again, we had seen it consistently declining for several months, really. And this is the first increase we've seen in quite some time. About a 4% increase over the report from last week. So marginal impact on the overall numbers of individuals hospitalized, but nevertheless concerning due to that transition from a decline to an incline. The ICU beds yesterday, 42 with a moving average of 39. That's been relatively flat. Ventilator use, 21 with a moving average of 21. You can see we've had some increase, but it's been relatively flat in both those measures. And I'll talk more about why we're seeing that decrease in acuity a little bit later. This is a projection from UT. This was last updated before the, that significant increase in admissions that I talked about last Friday and Saturday. This is showing again on this update, a path towards stage two. My expectation again, because of that increase that we saw Friday and Saturday, is that when UT updates this this week, it's going to show us either flat or increasing. You know, anytime we see that significant change in admissions to the hospital, that indicates to us, and is an accurate indicator, of increasing disease trends. So my guess is that the projections may indicate certainly a significant increase in the risk that the epidemic is growing in Austin and Travis County. This is an update of our hospitalizations by age group. Unfortunately, we've seen some increases in our age groups, our 80-plus age groups, 70 to 79, 60 to 69, and our 50 to 59 groups. And I'll talk more about that on the next slide. You can see from this, we have seen two weeks in a row of decrease in that 20 to 29 age group. And again, what we had seen in the past after holidays was that we would see an increase in the 10 to 19 age group, 20 to 29 age group, and then a week to two weeks later, increases in those older age groups. And it appears that's what we're seeing again. You can see here, 168 total hospital admissions last week. That's a 15%, correction, 16% increase in total hospitalizations over the previous week. So we've broken our trend of decreasing hospital admissions. You can see that we've had increases in every age group over the age of 30. So 12 to 16 for 80+, 27 to 34 for 70 to 79, 26 to 31 for our 60 to 69, 29 to 31 for our 50 to 59 group. So again, we're seeing contraction in those younger age groups and expansion in those older age groups. Travis County, City of Austin is doing a good job at vaccinating individuals 65 and older. Director Hayden Howard will talk more about that a bit later. But there's still lots of vulnerable people out there. We still have to be careful around older adults, particularly those who have not been vaccinated. It's important to remember that even though folks are vaccinated, they can still get COVID-19, which means even if you're around folks who've been vaccinated, you need to use caution. If you're symptomatic with anything that could be COVID, sore throat, cough, runny nose, nausea, vomiting, diarrhea, anything on that list of symptoms, you should not be around those older adults. If you're vaccinated and you're asymptomatic, it's a different story. And, you know, we have guidelines, CDC has guidelines for those, but we have to use caution. Anybody with symptoms, anybody who has been exposed to somebody with symptoms, should avoid going to places like nursing homes, long-term care facilities, or visiting relatives, particularly those who are unvaccinated. This is an update of our hospitalizations by race and ethnicity. We saw a significant decrease in our Latinx admissions last week. 41.3% of admissions the previous week to 33.8 last week. Unfortunately, we saw a significant increase in our African-American admissions to the hospital, 13% to 17.2%, which represents a 39% increase week over week for our African-American community members. Again, we know that vaccine hesitancy in our African-American community has been higher than in other communities. We've got some meetings this week, Director Hayden Howard and I, to discuss some of those hesitancy issues. But again, all of our community groups, all of our elected officials, all of our community advocates need to be actively reaching out, talking to people about vaccine, addressing their concerns, so that we can move past that hesitancy and get shots in arms and save lives. You can see here, this is the number of individuals from each race and ethnicity who were hospitalized last week. Saw a decrease, again, 57 to 49 in our Latinx community. Increase by the same amount, 57 to 65 in our white, non-Hispanic community. About a 14% decrease for our Latinx and a 14% increase for our white, non-Hispanic community. And you can see that increase that I spoke about before, 18 to 25 for our African-American community. This is an update of our positivity, week over week. You can see that last week, we rose to 4.8%. Currently, we're at 4.5% for the data for last week. Again, we still have data points coming in. That number may change. What we have seen is a significant decrease in testing. Whereas in the past, we were seeing 15,000, 20,000 tests a week, we're now seeing about 10,000 tests a week that's coming into our data feed. So again, part of the strategy of driving transmission down is ensuring that we're testing everybody who may have symptoms of COVID-19. And I say "may have symptoms" because the symptoms mimic lots of other things, including flu and including seasonal allergies. So it is really critical, even if you really don't think it's COVID-19, to go get yourself a free test and be sure it's not COVID-19 before you go to work, before you go to school, before you go hang out with family or friends. The more we can do that, the more success we can have with driving down the transmission. This is a breakdown of that positivity by race and ethnicity. Our Latinx community had a slight increase, 5.8% to 6.3% so far for last week. African-American community decreased, 5.5% to 4.5% for last week. Our Asian-American community, 5.6% to 3.9% last week. And our white, non-Hispanic community members, relatively flat, 3.9% to 4.0%. Again, the positivity of race and ethnicity is showing that almost everybody is under that 5% mark, but everybody is over that 3% mark. So again, across the board, across our races and ethnicities in our community, we've got to continue those protections to drive down disease. This is an update of the positivity by age. You can see that there have been significant increases in our positivity in our 40 to 49-year-olds and 50 to 59-year-olds. They are both over 7%, about 7.2%. So those are the highest positivity age groups in our community. You can see that we had a decrease in our 10 to 19-year-olds and 20 to 29-year-olds, but still over that 5% mark. You also see a significant increase in our individuals less than one year old, moving from under 3%, under 2% to about 5% last week. So again, COVID-19 can affect people of all ages. We know that hospitalizations increase the older you get, but we also see increases in the very young children due to the respiratory impact of COVID-19. We know that complications for children, the inflammatory response, is a significant issue. And I also want to point out that we have growing evidence of long-term concerns regarding COVID-19 infection, including, you know, brain injury that has an impact on rates of depression, anxiety, and other mental health issues. So again, regardless of what you think your risk is and how mild you think your symptoms may be, I'll tell you that I've talked to a lot of people who've been surprised. Athletes, marathoners, people who are active and young and healthy, who are significantly impacted by COVID-19, who can't walk a mile without having to stop and sit down, but used to be able to run 5, 10 miles or more. People who have lingering effects months after they're no longer infectious. These are real concerns. People need to pay attention. And I'll tell you, I know many people who've had COVID-19, and I can attest that you don't want to have it. Regardless of your age, regardless of how healthy you think you are, you don't want to have COVID-19. So please get your vaccine. Please continue to use those precautions until we can reach that herd immunity together. Here's some more details on our positivity in school-aged children. So again, we see that our middle school and high schools are well above that average positivity in our community. 7.9% for high schoolers, 5.1% for middle schoolers. Again, we have seen clusters associated with athletics. And I think you all are aware of the ones in AISD affecting the sports teams. We've certainly seen other clusters at other schools, typically, again, related to athletics, extracurricular activities, and social events. We're not at the place where we can go back to normal yet, and that includes our young people. So please continue those precautions. Parents, please continue to remind your children about the importance of masking and distancing and that personal hygiene. Again, similar to the previous weeks, we see that our elementary school and preschoolers are well under that average positivity, 1.7% for both this week. So again, quite a variation across our school ages. Still, no significant evidence indicating concern about clusters associated with classroom spaces. Our schools are doing a great job of enforcing masking, doing the distancing. So, you know, again, parents have to make an informed decision about whether or not they do in-person or virtual education. But certainly, I think the schools are doing a great job of keeping cases down outside of those extracurricular events. This is an update of our nursing home and long-term care facility dashboard. You can see that we've had a significant increase in cases in the last 14 days. So 13 reported for the previous 14 days. Last week's update was six cases. So as we've seen cases increase in the community, as we've seen positivity rise last week, we can expect to see some impact on our nursing homes. Again, relatively small clusters compared to what we were seeing before. But again, we do have many of these cases which were related to people outside the nursing home, outside the assisted living facility, engaging in risk-taking behaviors in terms of COVID exposure, and then going to the nursing home or the assisted living facility and visiting a loved one and spreading it there. So again, that's the reasoning behind the caution to continue to be vigilant about visiting older people who are vulnerable to disease, particularly if they're unvaccinated. This is an update on our regional infusion center efforts. Again, T-DIM opened this in coordination with the City of Austin and Travis County, opening on 1/6. Since then, more than 1,000 patients, 1,006 have been treated with monoclonal antibodies. Again, this is a free infusion designed to decrease the risk of those who are high-risk individuals for hospitalization and death. And I think this is contributing to the impact that we're seeing on hospitalizations. So we're grateful for the state in providing this resource. We continue to have more capacity than demand. So we encourage everybody, if you are diagnosed with COVID and you are at high risk, to talk to your healthcare provider about referral to the regional infusion center for that monoclonal antibody therapy. I do want to provide an update. I shared these slides with the media a couple of weeks ago. Want to make sure that you all were aware of the changes that we're seeing in terms of length of stay and mortality. So what you're seeing here is a graph that's showing the days in the hospital in which 95% of COVID patients are discharged from the hospital. You can see that for each of these age groups, 65+, 50 to 64, and 17 to 49, that 95% threshold was about 25 to 26 days. And across the board, since March, that has dropped to about 15 to 16 days. So it's about a 40% decrease in that measurement. So that's going to have a significant impact on the burden that our hospitals face from COVID-19. So we are, we've asked UT to reassess the triggers and the models to plug in this new data based on length of stay to determine if we can refine those projections based upon the trends that we're seeing. In addition to the decreased length of stay, you can see that we've had a significant decrease in the in-hospital mortality. So these are deaths of individuals who are admitted to the hospital. So for individuals who are 65 years and older, there's been a 63% decrease in the in-hospital mortality. For individuals 50 to 64, a 44% decrease. So remarkable decreases in both these age groups. Again, more than 80% of the deaths from COVID-19 have been from these two age groups. And so, you know, this is going to have a significant impact also on our death rates going forward. And I think this is a combination of the vaccine effort. And we know that it's possible for people to get COVID-19 even after they're fully vaccinated, but they tend to have a less severe disease course. It's also a testament to the monoclonal antibody therapy, which also, you know, people can still be hospitalized, but it does decrease the severity of that illness course in patients. So we're grateful for these two measures. This is certainly positive news. But again, we still have a long road ahead of us. And if we work together to drive down disease, combined with these ongoing efforts, we can certainly avoid significant surge in both cases, hospitalizations, as well as deaths. I also wanted to provide an update. I've shown you before some comparisons between Travis County and other metro counties in the state of Texas. Wanted to provide you some perspective on the national level, what other large cities are looking like in terms of COVID deaths. What I'm showing you here is deaths per 100,000 population. You can see Austin, Travis County in the dark blue at the bottom, Cook County in yellow, which is Chicago, New York, which is in the dark green, Los Angeles in the light blue, Phoenix, Maricopa County in the red, and the light green is Philly. So again, a lot of these larger metropolitan areas are averaging between 200 and 250 or so deaths per 100,000. Travis County sitting about 75. So really, you know, we're doing very well in terms of comparisons to other metropolitan, large metropolitan areas in the US. A quick update on our influenza report. You can see a significant jump in our positivity rate last week, 3.15%. That nets us about four cases, 107 total for the season. Again, we continue to maintain a record low season compared to the previous three years, certainly. You know, when we do the final tally, I think we'll find that this is a record low season, but we'll have to crunch the numbers at the end of the season to be sure of that. Again, we remain in stage three of our risk-based guidelines. Again, folks who are at high risk for severe disease, number one, should get vaccinated, but number two, need to continue to use significant caution in leaving their home. They need to ensure that they're going to places where mask is enforced, where distancing is enforced. And they should really avoid nonessential travel outside of their home. We're still seeing significant disease transmission in the community. And if we can effectively protect those high-risk individuals and individuals in their household, we can decrease the impact on our hospitals and certainly on their loved ones' chance of severe illness and death. And with that, I will turn it over to Director Hayden Howard.
Good morning. Thank you, Dr. Esq. This is a snapshot of our dashboard of vaccines that Austin Public Health, Coda, as well as Community Care has provided. According to this data, when we look at the race and ethnicity, we've noticed in our community, we provided, the Asian population, 14% have received the vaccine. African-American is at 5%. And the Hispanic population is at 19.5%. We always continue to look at what's happening at the state level as well, and, you know, just kind of notice the variations. What we have noticed at the state level for Travis County, which includes all of the providers as of today, the Asian population is at 6.82%. The black African-American is at 7.12%. And the Hispanic population is at 27.29. And so as we continue to provide vaccines, as we, not just Austin Public Health, but all providers, you'll constantly see all providers, you'll constantly see that this, this data will change from week to week. Next slide. Wanted to just share this information about, as we were looking to address the barriers for the vaccine, as we looked at the transportation divide, you know, we are very grateful for the partnership with Capitol Metro. And folks can give a call Monday through Sunday, these hours, and request a free trip to be transported over to our vaccine sites for the first and the second vaccine. In addition, you know, along the way, we have also considered the language divide. Online, we have six languages on our website, and residents can call 311 or our full number to get assistance with registering the vaccine. And the vendor that we have supports over 240 languages. Continuing to text message residents of the East and Crescent, that our volume is up to over 1,000 calls. Now with our digital divide, you know, very excited as we continue to move along and, and work through the relationship we've established with 311. They are continuing to help individuals. If they give them a call, they will register them for an account. And, and then from that point, we established our equity line back in January. And so from there, our staff from our equity line, which does include city and county folks, they are calling folks back to, to schedule an appointment at our site. Continuing our partnerships in the East and Crescent, working with our face-based organizations, and with our mobile vaccine program, working with all of these partners as listed. One of the things I would like to share about our mobile vaccine program, year-to-date, we have provided over 4,400 vaccines with our various partners. We were really excited this past week, on Friday and Saturday, we were at Sacred Heart, provided, in partnership with them, provided 1,640 vaccines. In addition, the Health Alliance form physicians, we were able to be there this past Friday, and were able to provide first and second doses. And so I think the really great thing about the partnerships is that if an individual comes to one of our events and they've had a first dose and they have their card, we will gladly provide that vaccine. And so we are just continuing with that model, just to make sure that we are definitely reaching our vulnerable populations. Also this week, we will be working with the Austin Asian Community Health Initiative to be at the Vietnamese Catholic Church on Saturday, and we are going to provide some vaccines there. And so through our various partnerships, in more planning meetings with AISD, as you all are aware, on Thursdays, they do, they offer their food assistance at several schools. And so we are working collaboratively with them to determine, you know, what a process would look like and how we establish that. So that is more in the works. As we continue to pivot, you know, we are picking up more, more neighborhood models. Next slide. This is just an update about our childcare education in our senior population. Over 12,000 vaccines have been provided to schools and childcare staff. With our seniors population, according to our data, Austin Public Health, our first and second doses are listed here. And then according to the Department of State Health Services, over 101 vaccines have been provided to residents that are 65 years of age and older. Next slide. As we look at our vaccine update, we're definitely really looking at the data to just kind of move us to the place of vaccine immunity. And so last, to date, year-to-date, Austin Public Health has provided 251, 244 first and second doses, that is as of the 19. And as we look at the data, and this is inclusive of individuals that are 16 years of age and older, according to Disha's data, that's about a million people. And so that puts us at the 48.25% to get us to our, our goal of 67% of herd immunity. We, with our appointments this week, from last week to this week, we have been able to leave our appointments open. As you know, we have had a few challenges with our appointments filling, and so we thought we would try a few things just a little bit differently. So we've left our appointments open. We have been able to, to schedule a few more by leaving the, the scheduler open. And so we'll continue to, to work through that and kind of see how that works by leaving that open. But as of that time, from, from Sunday, from Saturday until today, 4,308 appointments were scheduled, and so at our various locations. We continue to have our equity team, city and county team, still making those calls and scheduling folks for appointments as well. We are also working on a process for walk-ins. We know that it is important for us to be as flexible as we can be. And so as we're looking at what that will look like for walk-ins, looking at the capacity, looking at how much vaccine we will take, looking at a specific location that we could be to make things accessible for the public. And so we will continue, and I will have more information about the walking process. Next, next slide. We wanted to just share a timeline of our distribution process and kind of talk about the eligibility and kind of give you a snapshot. As you all know, in January, we initially received our vaccines. At the end of December, we received a few, and then we received more in January. And so at the time, established ourselves as we had been a safety net and provided some vaccine sites. And so from there, in February, the state of Texas designated us as a hub. And so making sure that we were able to provide vaccines to any Texan that met the 1A and 1B criteria, but at the same time, we opened up Dove Springs and Flubriel's clinics. Really excited and grateful and wanted to show the Circuit of the American site that stood up and, and the partnership between Ascension Seaton, the county, and Community Care for our first drive-through clinic. And then as we moved on in March, we began to provide more, more targeted vaccines to folks that still met the 1A, 1B criteria, but then we expanded our health equity call center to include Travis County at that time. Along that time, we had provided about 100,000 vaccines. And later in March, we expanded to the Burger Center and started our program. But then our mobile vaccine program began working initially with Mills on Wheels. And as you can see, you know, we have expanded that to several partners that we are very grateful for their participation in allowing us to, to work with them and then to, to share the clients that they're working with. In April, everyone is eligible for all of the vaccine according to, in the state of Texas. And we made a change to our southeast branch library, still doing some testing there, but we're also providing vaccines. And then we're going to continue to pivot in the month of May to shift to neighborhood clinics. It's going to be important for us to continue to partner with the community, connect with grassroots organizations, and be very targeted and intentional. And so as we move forward, these are some of the strategies that we are going to implement. We know that based upon these strategies, it's going to, we'll be able to see more changes with the data. Definitely being able to impact the areas and the populations who have been hit very hard during the COVID during this time. At this time, that completes my presentation, and I am available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will proceed with the questions then, starting with the Commissioner's Court. Commissioner Shea?
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Gomez. I did have a question for Dr. Esq. I've, there was a post yesterday originating with Dr. Ashish Jha, who was really raising the issue of how the number of new cases daily has remained flat now for, I think it's roughly two months, at a time when we are literally rapidly vaccinating millions and millions of people. And the point I think they were making is, given that we are now vaccinating so many, literally millions of Americans, the fact that the new cases is remaining flat is a cause for great concern because it means there's much more rapid spread. And I, I think that, that struck me as a really significant point to emphasize because I think a lot of people are kind of feeling like, you know, we're starting to get past this, you know, we've had enough people vaccinated and we can let down our guard more, or people who feel like they're still bulletproof and don't need to be vaccinated, or whatever reason they have for not wanting to be vaccinated. Can you just speak to this because this seems like a pretty alarming statistic?
Yes, Commissioner. You know, I, I think this goes back to the discussions we were having last month about the timing of reopening. I think the best strategy is for us to have delayed gratification, for us to continue the protections to drive down disease and open when that happens, not before it happens. And that's what we've seen happening across the U.S. is, we've seen, you know, cases on the decline, we've seen state-by-state things opening up again, not a little bit, but opening up all the way. And I think that's exactly why we're seeing this, this long-lasting plateau that is still leaving us in a position to experience a surge. The, the ceiling is still quite high on the number of cases. We still have 500,000 people at least in Travis County who can, are susceptible to COVID-19. The number's probably much higher than that due to overlap of vaccinated people and people who've had natural illness. So we still have to be very cautious. We cannot be in a race to normalcy and get ahead of ourselves, and I think that's where we are right now. I do think that because the ceiling is dropping every day due to vaccinations, that the risk is decreasing on a daily basis regarding the magnitude of that surge, but it's still, still, the ceiling is still high enough for us to, to be hit significantly from COVID-19. And we've got to, we've got to pay attention to that. We've seen it play out in countries across the world. We saw yesterday, I think, that we've set a new worldwide record for, for new cases. COVID's not gone anywhere yet. It's still here. It's moving around. But I think it's important that we think about that, particularly when it comes to summer planning. Regardless of where the U.S. is, the rest of the world is not going to be where the U.S. is in terms of vaccinations. And when we think about opening up too much, we think about spreading variants that right now are relatively rare, particularly the South African variant. So that means if we choose to travel, it should be only in the circumstance where individuals are fully vaccinated and they are absolutely protecting themselves during the journey and during the travel period. I can't stress that enough, that we are still very vulnerable. The path towards herd immunity is really based upon the current variants that we know, and the fact that even, you know, amongst the UK variant, the Brazilian variant, the vaccine's still pretty good. The threat, the real threat that we have is the emergence of a variant that successfully evades the current vaccine, because then we've got to start all this over again. What can we do as a community to prevent that? We can mask, we can distance, we can wash our hands, we can be vaccinated. The faster we can do that, we can quickly close the window on the possibility of those new variants emerging and, and get to that place of normalcy that we all want to be, but we can't rush it.
Absolutely. And does this elevate the urgency of people getting vaccinated?
Absolutely.
These new variants?
Absolutely. We're, we're literally in a race against time, and I know lots of other public health doctors have, have used that, but that's, that is what we are facing. If we don't do it fast enough, we will see these variants continually emerge. The more they interact, the virus interacts, so the variants interact with vaccinated people, the more likely it is that it will, you know, we'll see a variant emerge that's vaccine-resistant. And then we'll, you know, the boosters will emerge and we'll be constantly changing those in the future. So again, you know, we've, we've got to get vaccinated. I know there's been folks who didn't want to be first in line to get the vaccine because they weren't sure, you know, how about the 85th millionth in line? There's lots and lots of vaccines out there. Even with the Johnson and Johnson concerns, vaccine is still incredibly safe. All of them are still incredibly safe. The risks of the natural disease are much higher, much more significant, much more long-lasting than the complications that we're seeing, which are very, very rare. We, we simply must care about our community members, care about our family and friends, and talk to them openly, honestly about the vaccine facts. APH has a great website. We update it weekly with weekly facts on vaccines. Make sure that you tune into reliable sources of information when you're making the decision whether or not to be vaccinated.
Commissioner Trevilian?
Good morning. Good morning. Once again, I would like to, to thank you both, Dr. Esq. and Director Hayden Howard, for the work that you've done. I understand that you have worked really hard to make sure that we pivot and work with community, that we work in community, that we go out to where people are and educate them about opportunities and make sure that, that we give them assistance in using the data systems that we have in place. I want to say thank you for all that you've done, the work that you've done in the evenings, the work that you've done on the weekends. It has been appreciated, and I think it has made a huge difference. I want to ask, and I appreciate the way in which the presentation was laid out today, because it shows that we have been analyzing barriers and developing resources to specifically address those barriers. And, and that will be my question today. What can we do from a training perspective, whether it is with our local workforce board or whether it is with our local school districts, to make sure that we identify the places in our system where there are labor shortages and build a program to get students who are interested trained in health-related fields, whether that's nursing, whether it's first response, first... first resp- uh first responder, whether that's social work or data management? What can we do together to make sure that there is specific training in areas where we understand that there is a labor shortage? Uh because I think as we look into communities that historically have been underserved, uh we need to create opportunities so that those folks, some some uh some community members who are from the from the areas where there's hesitancy, that we build professionals to address and educate and work with those communities. What um I just want to see whether we can sit down and work with the local workforce board and build a plan based on our after action report.
Um yes, uh Commissioner Trevilian, um I think it is very important that we do that. Um one of the things um that we've just noticed as um City of Austin, uh a few years, two years or so, uh meeting with our human resources director, she shared with us that about five percent of the um City of Austin um personnel are would be eligible for retirement. So not that they would, but they would be eligible, and that was a few years ago. And so it's going to be important for us to really kind of think about, you know, who is going to be our workforce for tomorrow, how we are going to um be able to emphasize um workforce development and skills. And so one of the things that, you know, Austin Public Health has done is, is um a couple of years ago, we did implement the public health pipeline. That public health pipeline um works with schools. Um and um um Dr. Eugene has really worked hard on that program. But what that program does is, is that um it brings uh students to public health. Um they've been working with us virtually during this time, but what it does is that exposes them to the work at public health, talks with them about the different areas in public health, and um just kind of ex, you know, gives them that experience. And so it's going to be important that we do expose um young people um and then kind of raise them up um through the ranks, whether it's they end up with high school education or some type of trade, or if they um go further. Um and we've had some that have have gone further and and have circled back and they have college interns with us as well. And so that workforce development piece is very important, and we would love to work with you um on that.
I I will, I'll certainly uh work with you, look for, and I look forward to working with you. I yeah, I have seen us when it comes to uh the microchip industry, I've seen us when it comes to the construction energy um industry develop specific programs with the local workforce board. I think health will, health-related fields are critically important for us, and and I think that uh the local workforce board has put together a strategy in a number of areas. I just want to focus more on health-related issues because I think that will address some of the cultural hesitancy issues that we see as it relates to healthcare. So uh we we are certainly looking forward to working with you and and um and bringing any resources that we can assist with to the table. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Commissioner Howard?
Thank you. I would just like to ask um Dr. Esq. or Stephanie Hayden Howard, if there's any stone unturned, you know, what can we as leaders in this community do um that you've seen other leaders perhaps in other communities do, but um you know, to to continue to get the word out, to share the message, or to support your teams? If you had a wish list of two or three things, is there, is there anything we're not doing that we could be doing? And let's get forth.
You know, I think.
Go ahead.
I think one thing I I would really suggest of 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 all of you, um if you have received your vaccine, my hope is, is that all of you have received your vaccine, um um and if you have and if you if you've taken any photos of it, um can you be um a person that says, you know, I've taken my vaccine, I, you know, I fully support it, um and, you know, even the reason why you're doing it, using your social media, et cetera? Um I think that is um critically important um kind of to the, in the space of of vaccines. I think the other thing that's really important is, is um really explaining and continuing to um explain to folks about public health. Um as we've moved along, I still think that there are some folks that still um confuse public health with healthcare, and um there are some health departments that still work in that space of healthcare and public health, but I think it's really to share what you know about public health, um just to really kind of help with that educational piece. So those are my kind of two wish lists. I'll turn over to Dr. Esq.
Yeah, Stephanie, and and I agree. I I I think, you know, ag- again, we talked about before, the vaccination uh process previous to today was about getting enough vaccine to get it to the people who wanted it. We're past that point now. Now supply exceeds demand. Uh we had a very brief plateau, but you know, I think from here forward, we're going to see that 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 supply exceeds demand, and we're going to have to work hard to get people in the queue uh to get their vaccine, which means that every meeting of every organization, every church sermon, every scout meeting, every group meeting in the community needs to be addressing vaccination. The more we're talking about it, the more we're sharing facts and dispelling fiction, the more people are going to to be inclined to get the vaccine. We know from previous public health interventions, the more people hear it, the more people that are, that are, uh more times they're asked about it, the more likely they are to do it. Uh we still have some work to do, as Director Hayden Howard mentioned earlier, making the vaccine more accessible to people, putting it closer to home, closer to work, at times when they can uh get the vaccine, which is convenient for them. Um but we, we need people to get signed up, we need people to discuss it, we need to dispel the myths, we need to get people in line. Uh again, social media, uh meetings, churches, uh all those groups, the more we talk about it, the more success we're going to have.
Thank you. What I am interested in in finding out is how closely we are getting to the herd immunity. And so we're saying that we're now at forty-eight point two-five percent of the population?
We're, we're forty-eight point, forty-eight point two-five of adults in Travis County. Okay, there's still another two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand or so people under sixteen. Uh so we're about thirty percent uh uh of of the way to herd immunity, people who are fully vaccinated of all ages. Um so we've, we've got a ways to go, the state's got a ways to go, um and it's going to take increasing efforts in order to get us there.
Sure. And and I think in s- in in lieu of a photo, uh uh Director Hayden is, uh what I would say is, it goes back to when we were children, uh before we ever went to school, we had to line up and get our vac- vaccinations. And and so I think that ki- that experience stays with us. As we grow older, uh something else comes along, we need a va- we need vaccine. And so I think it it um, it starts when you're, when you're, where, when you're a young child. Uh you get used to the fact that you have to be healthy, you're going to continue getting through school and getting through life. So um I think um, I think we need to go back to that elementary school and and uh get all of the the kids get getting used to um to vaccines uh to to stay healthy. Uh so anyway, that that was, that's my uh input on that. Uh Mayor, I'll turn it over to you.
Commissioner, thank you. Uh we're going to uh go uh districts uh in in one to ten today. Uh but before we start, I just wanted to give a a brief re- report as well. You know, in looking at the barriers vaccinating the community, a few things I think are are clear, as you have made uh in in your presentation repeatedly, Dr. Esq. and uh Director Hayden Howard. And one is that the digital divide is is real. So online registration, even with an optimized website, uh is still a hurdle for for way too many people. Uh and we're seeing that with uh the vaccination uh numbers that we keep uh talking about. Um and it's hard to do vaccinations without a pre-registration system. Uh so we have uh supply that that is is uh from the state, hasn't historically been predictable, and when you have walk-up, you have uh the 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 danger or threat of having vaccinations at the end, which we saw this weekend uh out at Nelson Field, uh as that event ended with um our vaccinators walking up to retail locations uh in the area to 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 find people and and see if they were ready to be uh to vaccinated, to make sure that we 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 issued all those. Uh so I really do like that as the general public gets vaccinated to create our numbers, as supply increases, that we're really working on the targeted walk-up strategy, uh as uh Austin Public Health is uh is doing. Uh the event at Sacred Heart, that was really good, uh also the pop-up events like in HAM were really good. So in speaking, as we've heard here in in recent times with Director Hayden Howard, one of the big limiting factors in the strategy is uh clinical staffing to administer the uh vaccines. Uh it seems as if we have plenty of other kinds of volunteers, and I know that the county and then Judge Brown have, and others have done a really good job of 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 building up the infrastructure to be able to solicit and get uh those uh those those volunteers. Um but uh the 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 hurdle seems to to still be the uh the medical volunteers. Uh so just reporting what happened this weekend, uh my office and I uh really focused on recruiting medical volunteers, and in just this past week, I just want to say I really appreciate the the sixty doctors and nurses uh that have stepped up, the indication that there are are still more that are that are on the way. Uh with uh uh just forty-eight hours' notice, again, just want to thank the volunteers. We were able to deploy, deploy a team of eleven out to Nelson Field this weekend for the pop-up event at at KidFest, that uh Food and Resource Fair put on by Child Inc. and Austin Voices. Uh real special thanks to to Chief Ken Bailey of ESD eleven, being the vaccinator of record, uh the collaborative for acting as our pharmacy out at Coda. Uh Councilmember Casar for uh for significant role in 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 organizing uh that event. Also want to thank um my my chief of staff, Leslie Margis, uh who has stepped in in front of this to 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 also try to to help, and then to to her partner, Dr. Thomas, uh who stepped up to be, I guess you need a physician of record onsite or something like that, and um and they literally rode over to uh Coda uh in the morning where the pharmacy was set up to mix the vaccines and then took it out and uh was with the um that physician group when they arrived. I think the goal is to develop a bench of a hundred volunteer vaccinators uh and just make them available to various equity efforts. I know my colleagues on the council, uh many, uh if not all, are are working with their constituents to to help set these up or 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 elevate those kinds of opportunities, and that was a limiting factor. So we're trying to help and and participate in creating that bench of vaccinators that can then be deployed to uh to events as they happen. Uh I go in length here because we're not at a hundred yet. So this is a a plea to the community, to the 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 doctors and then the nurses that are able to to vaccinate, uh request that you stand up and join this uh bench of uh volunteer vaccinators to 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 help flesh this out so that it's a resource that's available to APH and to uh all the offices that are working on this. So thank you, everybody. Uh and uh thank you, Director Hayden Howard, for for uh assisting that, pointing us in the right direction for that, and for all the work you're doing, doing the same work uh as we all work together to try to build those numbers. All right, let's go to the council, beginning with uh District One. Mayor Protan?
Thank you very much. Thanks for the presentation, uh Dr. Esq. and and Director Hayden Howard. I think uh, I think most of us are are thinking along the same lines at this point, which is um, which is really helpful because I think it's gonna, it's gonna make our our questions very similar, in which case we get to get real granular now. Um I, and along the lines of what Mayor Adler was just asking, I I keep finding myself wondering, where are the people? So, you know, my colleague, um Councilmember Fuentes and Councilmember Casar have both, you know, may, and and uh Commissioner Trevilian have made a point to talk about mobile vaccination, go to where the people are. And, you know, in in theory, I absolutely can see how that's the the necessary approach, like that's what we should do. Um but I I also keep thinking, you know, we were at at Nelson Field the other day and in a conversation I overheard, um it was the thought of trying to go to where every individual person is, especially when you take into consideration needing that physician onsite and needing people who are eligible to distribute vaccines. I'm just trying to figure out where, what's the way for us to get the most bang for the book? How, the most, you know, shots in arms? And it seems to me where the people are, you know, much like Councilmember Casar made a point to to acknowledge that the people were already going to be at that Nelson Field event, in which case I'm just trying to figure out what's the best, most efficient way to capture where all the events are already happening, um either private events or or public events? Where are the events already happening? Where are their schools already, you know, where there's a a lot of their students that are coming in? Where are their camps already? Where, you know, I'm just trying to figure out, how do we create that catalog of opportunities? Is there a way, as we're asking for volunteer vaccinators, can we also be asking folks in that, you know, event space or, you know, folks who are accustomed to, you know, getting um sharing information about events? Is there some way to make that more organized? And I guess that would be a a Director Hayden Howard question.
Well, we, we have started um reaching out to partners to let us know when they're going to um have events. Um but one of the things we've just kind of emphasized is that if you call me today, which is Tuesday, and the event is Saturday, we're not going to be able to do that. So we, we've got to have sufficient notice, um because with us, one, scheduling people, you know, further out, um and we, you know, we have to plan for staffing. So so it's important for us um to be able to get that information um and be able to um plug our folks into that process. I think the other thing um that is really, you know, going to be important as well is that um a a lot of this is is uh is is relationships. What we are finding is that the partners that we are able to get a a kind of larger captive audience, you know, that are coming to these events, are the um places where they have some type of relationship with them. They're, they're connected to to that um individual. We've had folks to refer folks to us, um they're very good about showing up because they have a relationship with that grassroots organization. Um, you know, I'll use Sacred Heart, you know, they have that connection to Frank Fuentes, and they show up. Uh we were at the church, um um the um St. James', and we're going to repeat that again. Um and so they're connected to their pastors, and they made an agreement, and they showed up at those events. So we've got to keep that part of um that in sight as well, that it is going to be about the relationship that they have with the person or the organization that is sending them to us. And we do have um greater success with the no-show rate. Absolutely, you're going to always have a no-show rate because something is always going to happen. Um but I think the other part that we must do, and um, and we noticed this at St. James, um there, there was a lot of education that went on because even when people are there and you're providing the vaccines, they may not decide to to get the vaccine on that day. And so we must be prepared to bring the education, to to ask any questions that folks have in addition to providing the vaccine. So you're going to have to kind of double up in being able to do both because there's going to be folks that are going to, yes, they're ready, they're going to get it, but then there're going to be folks that'll be hesitant and just want the information. And so those things are going to be important as well.
Thank you. I I appreciate that, and I guess, you know, I'll I'll close out that that line of questioning with the places that I keep thinking people are already and aren't going anywhere. So. So, you know, jails, hospitals, the places that people have to go, the WIC office, the, you know, those are the kinds of places that keep coming to mind for me, the consistency of flow. So, yeah, those are the ones that keep coming back to me. But thank you. I appreciate your response.
Thank you, Councilmember Fuentes.
Thanks, Mayor. My question is for City Manager Kronk. Manager Kronk, you know, last week we met, we had a meeting with members of our community who expressed deep frustration with how the rollout has been when it comes to the vaccines, especially when it comes to vaccinating our communities of color. You were a part of that meeting. And I'm hoping if you could, I'm hoping that today you can speak a little bit to what efforts are being placed or in progress that the city is doing to vaccinate our most marginalized communities? What message would you like to share in relation to that meeting that we had with our community?
Thank you, Councilmember Fuentes, and thanks for being part of that important conversation that we had with so many great partners in our community. And I couldn't agree more that there were both good recommendations that came out of it. And we are actively working on both responding to those recommendations and building off of the comments that were made there. Because as we've heard in this presentation today, the pivot has already started to move from our mass vaccination clinics to neighborhood hubs, mobile clinics, making sure that we're going to the communities where the vaccines are needed and doing the appropriate level of education and response. What was really exciting and provided me a lot of optimism coming from that is we do have engaged partners that are wanting to be a part of the solution. And we just need to continue to work on tapping into those efforts. So I know that Director Hayden Howard has already been engaging with many of those community partners. We've had a great relationship with the Dell Valley Community Coalition. And we will continue to leverage many of those organizations so we can get at all of those populations that are the most vulnerable. I'll ask Director Hayden Howard to describe a few more examples that may have not been shared with us today. But this is just the start of a really important partnership with so many of our community members that are not getting access to those vaccines right now.
Thank you, Spencer. One of the things that does come to mind, Commissioner, is really, you know, as we look at kind of rolling out things and we look at, you know, how we need to make changes, making sure that we're moving to the neighborhood model, those voices that we hear from the community is very important. And so I think, you know, one of the things that we really need to look into a little more is, are there additional grassroots organizations that we need to execute a few more contracts? Right now, we have seven of those agreements in place. And so I know that there are small grants as well, you know, they're $25,000 grants. And so we need to reevaluate that and look at that a little closer and determine, do we need more partners? Do we need to fund them a little more? We've been able to, you know, work very closely with several other partners outside of that seven. But I think being able to maybe kind of pull all of them together, including the folks that have referred, have been referring folks to us, is going to be important. And so our staff is going to work on convening that group of folks just to really be able to hear a little bit more from them directly and ask them kind of later, look at what we're looking at moving forward, doing the neighborhood model, you know, moving into apartment complex, et cetera, and see if they would like to add any other strategies that they think are important and other ways that we can reach those communities. So more to come with that, and we will share more information about that as well.
Thank you. And it's great to hear that we are, you know, shifting to a neighborhood model and a neighborhood approach and that our community can expect more information on that effort as we look to start hosting more of those opportunities in a matter of days with May just being around the corner. And it's so great to hear that you will be, you know, having ongoing conversations with our community, with those groups that we know are trusted community partners and know our community in a way that will help us address some of the hesitancy that we're seeing and hearing from the community. And now that we know that we have about 39% of our population who is eligible to receive the vaccine, has not been vaccinated, and are considered vulnerable, what can we do as far as education and outreach? I mean, you touched on it a little bit, but is part of your work with the community and with organizations, is it going to be focused on education around the hesitancy of the vaccine? Can you speak a little bit more about that effort and perhaps what APH is currently considering?
Well, it needs to be around the hesitancy, but it also really needs to be able to, because there's going to have to be maybe some one-on-one conversations. You know, I think that, you know, being able to speak to folks in a, kind of in a setting where they are receiving the education, but there has to be maybe some more hard-to-hard conversations. You really want to get at the matter of, why are you hesitant about this vaccine? And I kind of go back to the example of where Dr. Pickett and I went to a Bible study. And we were able to provide information. And so one of the things that a couple of the people came up afterwards, they were not going to get the vaccine. They already made up their mind, but they wanted to come and hear what we had to say. And based upon what we had to say, several of them at the end told us they changed their minds. And they were African-Americans. And so sometimes a person has to hear something three times. So, I mean, you know, we may have to have people that kind of go back to this person or call the person back to ask them again, you know, have you changed your mind? Do you have any other questions? And then there are going to other people that make up their mind, they're ready to go. And so we've got to be flexible. We've got to be able to kind of offer tools that, you know, all of us are working together, Austin Public Health and all of our partners, grassroots organizations that we have contracts with, but then other partners that we don't have contracts with, just to see what they're doing in this space. And so everybody kind of coming on board to be able to do the education part of it, providing the facts, but then addressing the hesitancy and the why. It's going to be all, all of that is going to be important.
For sure. And just as a follow-up, you know, as we look at the scheduler and how we have that set up, and I am appreciative that we opened up the window when people can sign up for an appointment. But, you know, have we considered just having it be open, an open call, you know, 24/7? Sign up when you can? I mean, it seems the issue here is that our supply is far greater than the demand. So why not have it open 24/7 so that you can, anyone who wants a vaccine can schedule their appointment?
Well, as you know, we're, it's a technology platform. Technology has to be programmed. Technology you have to work through to tell what else differently you wanted to do. And so our staff did work through those pieces. They are kind of evaluating because we did leave it open, started just over the weekend, Saturday through Sunday, and then they opened it back up again and have just closed it. And so I'll be sitting down with my IT manager and having those conversations about what that would look like ongoingly to have that portal open. And so I'll be able to share more with you all on next week.
Okay. Would love to see it open, you know, at 24/7. I think I've seen other counties move to that model. So it would make sense for us, especially since we're, you know, it's a race against time at this point to have that opportunity. It's one less barrier of having to schedule time to schedule your appointment and be part of that timeframe. And then my last question is around text messaging. I've seen other counties also provide a call number similar to our Equity Line that one can text to receive updates. And so I'm just going to get your thoughts on text messaging strategies that we're currently considering and perhaps having the works.
Well, are you asking about the ability for an individual to text us and ask questions? Is that what you are asking about? Or us text a person about information in general?
Well, I mean, I love the idea that someone could text a number and have some questions addressed. Perhaps that'll be a hesitancy strategy. I think that's a great opportunity there. But I was thinking more of a number to text to find, where is my nearest vaccine opportunity? And/or a way for APH to also push information out? So if we're not moving to a 24/7 online open registration or online open appointments, then perhaps we can text individuals saying, we have appointments available at this location. Click here to sign up.
Oh, yes, we have the ability to do that. Yes, we do. And we have actually been doing that, the text messages that, I've left my account open just to see what communication I receive from my staff. They're probably going to close my account now. But just to see what I receive from my staff. And so the text messages kind of as high-level reads, you know, please reach out to 311 to finish, you know, your registration process. I have, I am fully vaccinated, so I just want everybody to know that. But I wanted to go into the system kind of early on when we implemented it just to have an understanding of what the public was experiencing. So we do send out those text messages about, you know, completing your registration, et cetera. But let me check with staff, I'm going to make a note to say, can we text and say that the system is open at this time? I'm pretty sure we have the ability to do that.
Yeah, and I think what I'm looking for is so that I can share with my community, text "vaccine" to 36777 to find your nearest vaccine appointment opportunity. You know, like, I want to be able to say, text this number, you'll get a response with information on how to make your appointment. And/or if it's a pop-up vaccine, they'll get notified if there's a pop-up location in their neighborhood. Thank you. No questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Renteria.
Yes, Stephanie, I also have, I have a student that, a student leader at Eastside Memorial. And she was asking me about 15- and 17-year-old vaccination. Can you give me some information on what's the process for them besides calling the local pharmacy to get the vaccine?
Are they reaching out to, do they have a primary care physician?
Some of them don't. So I was wondering if, do we offer any of that kind of service with Austin Public Health? Or are we just restricted to 18?
So we only provide Moderna. But, you know, I think what, and maybe I need to double-check with staff. Dr. Esq., you talked about your daughter, because she's 17, and she was looking for her vaccine. So outside of the pharmacies that will provide it if they have Pfizer, working with the county as well, that's been another, you know, way for us to get folks. But Esq. may be able to share what his daughter was able to do to get her vaccine because she's 17.
Thank you, Stephanie. Yeah, so Councilmember, really for 16- and 17-year-olds, they're looking at only the Pfizer vaccine. So the main sites for that, Coda is one of them. So Coda's an all-Pfizer site, so availability at Coda means availability for 16- and 17-year-olds. If they're under the age of 18, they do need to have a parent in the car with them to consent. My daughter signed up at CVS on her own, you know, looked around the area, put in different ZIP codes to find out who had availability, scheduled it, got it the next day. So there is lots of vaccine availability such that, you know, a 17-year-old can get one the next day. They may have to drive a little bit still, but it's certainly there if you want it. So CVS, Walgreens, I think HEBs are also Pfizer. So if you go to that Vaccine Finder website and look for "who carries Pfizer", that's the best thing for our teenagers right now. I will say that Pfizer submitted for a modification of their EUA on April 9th to the FDA to go down to age 12. So the expectation is that sometime in May, that we'll have a vaccine for middle schoolers and high schoolers, which is going to be very helpful. It's going to feed lots more people into that eligibility list. I think it's going to, you know, we're likely to see an increase, particularly as people plan for summer camps and summer travel. They're going to want to get their kids vaccinated before they do those things. So we expect that in May. I have not seen that the FDA has scheduled a specific date to review that, but I think most people are expecting the next several weeks.
So the 16- and the 17-, they would have to go on to either this location and make a call in and make an appointment? Is that correct? That's the procedure? You have to still make an appointment, you just can't go to COVID, Coda?
Yes, sir. You still need to make an appointment? Again, each of those different sites have a different process for registration. So, you know, they'll have to do a little bit of searching, but I think there is substantial availability right now.
Okay. Because I need to give that information back to the student leader because they can get that information out to their 16-, 17-year-old friends. So I really want to thank you for that because that's been a struggle for them to try to get that information. And if we can get that information to the principal, the vice principal of all these high schools that we have around here, that would be really great. You know, because they really need that information there. So they, you know, they're kind of confused about, you know, they don't realize which vaccine they're need to take. So they might call over there to Austin Public Health and then find out that it's not a place to, you know, to make an application, I mean, appointment on there, so.
Yes, sir. And we've been having those conversations with our superintendents over the past several weeks. And we've encouraged our school districts to actively provide information to parents and students, particularly those high school students, juniors and seniors. We're seeing lots more universities who are going to require vaccinations to be on campus in the fall. But in addition to that, Councilmember, we've encouraged through our coalition with the other 350 providers in Travis County to transition their mindset also from passive vaccination to active vaccination. So starting that process of active outreach. And we're pleased to see that this is already starting to happen. As I spoke to Dr. Elizalde in a meeting yesterday, who shared that Walgreens is working with her, particularly focused on Title I schools. And we're seeing other private entities starting that active outreach process, particularly to our higher-risk communities. It really is about all of us, not just the public sector, but the private sector also engaging in these same strategies to get to her community.
Well, thank you for that because we really need to get that information. Because like you said about the marathon runner, I, there was a young man that's in our boxing program that, you know, he went to a march and didn't have a mask on, and he got COVID. You know, and he spent five days in a hospital. And now he can't even go three rounds because that's the maximum amount that young amateur boxers go. And he cannot do the third round. He just, you know, he just cannot breathe and his lung starts hurting. So that's very true, you know, the long-term effect, you never know. We need to get our young people vaccinated so they don't have to go through that.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Casar.
Thanks, Mayor. And I know you thanked some, a good handful of folks for their help this weekend.
And I know you thanked some, a good handful of folks for their help this weekend. But I had a list here too and wanted to make sure we didn't miss anyone. So if folks will entertain it, I just want to thank those folks again and then share some learnings from that pop-up event. Because we've talked about it for so long and some of these hard-hit zip codes. And I think there's some really good things about it. But I think there's some things we learned that are worth reiterating here. But first of all, for the thanks, really specifically, Kate Garza, who is Chief of Staff to Judge Brown, put in lots of late night and early morning hours. So I want to thank her specifically, along with your Chief of Staff, Mayor Leslie Vargis, Childs Inc. and Austin Voices already had an event going at Nelson Field. But then within 48 hours to pivot and say, we're going to add a vaccination clinic to the end of the event. It's a really big deal. In that same 48 hours, Constable Morales stepped up along with AISD facilities and police staff to manage traffic. Chief Bailey from ESD 11, Dr. Thomas, as you mentioned, Lone Star Circle of Care. Austin Travis County EMS had someone there to make sure that everything was safe. We had help from APH. And then Geronimo Rodriguez, both Chair of the AISD Board, but also at Ascension Seaton, also put in, you know, really extra, extra time and hours to make sure that it could work, along with many others. And Commissioner Travilla and Councilmember, Mayor Porten Harper-Madison and Mayor, y'all, all came by and appreciate all of that. So with a, just a couple of days' notice, an event was put together at Navarro High School, which we also had a lot of help from AISD on and Walgreens, along with the help at Nelson Field. So we had sort of two pop-up events where community members had 24 hours' notice or less, in some cases, you know, less than two minutes' notice that you could get a vaccine. And the pros, which I just want to share for folks, because these are both largely in 5.3 and 5.8, two of the hardest zip codes with the lowest vaccination rates that we've been talking about. You know, we had between those two events, over a thousand people or about a thousand people that decided to get a shot, which is really good. You know, some, there was a lot of people with no hesitancy, right? They found out, they thought they were getting a box of food. They found out they could get a shot and they decided that minute to get a shot. And people, you know, got called and knew about it the day before. So there's certainly value in bringing some of these events direct to the community because there are some people who need it, who have struggled with online and haven't known how to get it and just get it then and there. There are, so that's a big pro. And another big pro is that we have incredible people that are willing to put something together this fast. But some learnings that I think are important to share is that figuring out how to give people more time in advance, not just for the people planning it, but also for the people coming, I think is important. You know, in the past, we didn't want to let people know of things way too long in advance if we had very little vaccine, because you could worry about having a line four times as long where you disappoint a lot of people and continue to propagate this problem of people feeling rejected from the vaccine. That's not where my sense is we are anymore. And I haven't said that out loud at one of these meetings and that's why I want to say that out loud. Because now I think there, because we have that supply, we have, I had more people say, well, you know, there's sometimes planning involved, you might have some side effects or just deciding in that moment for some people seemed uncomfortable. And I went car to car talking to people to convince them to get it. And there was more hesitancy than I've seen in some cases. I got asked about Johnson &amp; Johnson a lot. I got asked a lot of times which vaccines we were giving out. We made it really clear that the vaccines were safe and important to get. Had conversations with people who told me they'd already gotten it. And then after I talked with them a little bit more, found out they hadn't gotten it. And really having that conversation with people, I think, is really important. So I think now with those pop-up events, we can see how they really are useful in these communities. I mean, I wasn't taking the tally, but pretty easy to bet 80%, 90% plus folks of color receiving the vaccine at these, at the events that I was at. So really important and successful in reaching people. But I do think now with pop-ups finding out, I mean, we didn't want to turn away any vaccines. So we said, let's do it in 48 hours if that's how much time we've got. And that's right, and I'm glad we did that. But as Director Hayden Howard said, now if we go with more time in advance, I think we're now at a place where we can let people know in advance where we are no longer as short on supply. So we can really try to drive people to the events so that they can plan and that we can work on the hesitancy issues. And I do think that though all those pop-up events are important, they can't substitute for the walk-ups you've been talking about, Director Hayden Howard, so that people with hesitancy or uncertainty, that we can work on them over time and not just get them to one pop-up event, but that they always know that this neighborhood area is always available and that they can sign up when they are ready. So I really like to second what Councilmember Fuentes said around, if we have a place where we could say, text this number and we'll let you know. And when you get the text back, they say, which neighborhood are you in? And then we tell them, well, this fire station or this library or this YMCA, anytime between whatever it is, noon and 7:00 PM, you show up, you get a vaccine. Then as we work them and talk people through getting the vaccine, they kind of always know that they can go there when they're ready. And I think that that may be what it takes. You know, I had conversations with multiple expecting moms. That's not an easy conversation to have. And I think, as you said, we need to be able to have those conversations multiple times and have an easy place people can just walk up to and go. So thank you to everybody for helping with those pop-up events. I think they are good and important, but I don't think that they can fully substitute for 24-hour online registration, walk-up sites with a regular schedule that you can always show up to and have hours available for people that work different kinds of schedules, that kind of thing. I think we, we're now at that place where we need all of that. And I'm happy to hear from APH and the county team that that's where we're headed.
Thank you. Councilor Kitchen.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. I do want to, again, express my appreciation for all the work that everyone is doing. And I really appreciate the progress we're making as a community. So I have a couple of questions. And my first question is, goes back to data. I'm hearing and feeling the same things that have been expressed today in terms of the shift in our community. I think it was Dr. Eskot said that we're shifting now to where we have more supply than demand. And I'm hearing both in my district and from others about some more concern related to hesitancy. But I would like to know what kind of data we have. Have we done any kind of objective analysis through polling or some kind of outreach? I think that just helps us. I think the, what we're experiencing is very helpful and we need to respond to it. But I think it would be also important as a community that we actually put some resources toward understanding the data, particularly since we seem to be slowing down in terms of getting towards our herd immunity goal of, you know, last time we talked of 65% I think being a minimum. And we're only at 48.5, I think it was. So I think if we get some more data, that would help. And I think that that would be much of a commitment to resources to do that. So that we, so we know more specifically how we need to focus on addressing hesitancy and education in the way that my colleagues have been talking about. But that we also can identify what exactly are the barriers in terms of people getting access to. We may find some things that we're not aware of. So have we, so my question, that, my first question is, have we done any kind of polling or any kind of other research related to obtaining this objective data at this point in time? Have we done any of that, Dr. Eskot or Director Hayden Howard?
We have not done any polling, Councilmember. There has been polling done by private entities. But we can certainly explore the feasibility of local polls. Of course, the poll that was done earlier on in the spring indicated that 85% of individuals polled in Travis County indicated that they wanted a vaccine. We obviously know that polling is, may not accurately capture the true numbers. But we also have to think about the difference between people who want the vaccine and the people who want it now. The people who want it, willing to drive 20 miles to get it versus somebody else who, you know, may work two jobs and it needs to be very convenient for them. So that's why our approach is to make it more convenient. But I agree that having an information or a poll such as that for our community would help us to tweak our strategies to meet the needs.
Yeah, I mean, the usefulness of it is, it's only useful to the degree that it provides us additional information that we can then use to target our efforts. So whether those be educational efforts or those be access efforts. So I would encourage you all at this point in our process to do that. My second question.
Councilmember Kitchen, excuse me. I would just like to share with you that we have received, in addition to what Dr. Eskot has shared, we did attend a meeting with the Dale Valley Community Coalition. I may be not saying it correctly, Councilmember Fuentes, because I believe you were at that meeting as well. They did conduct a poll and they did share that information with us. And it does align very closely with what Dr. Eskot has mentioned. Their biggest concern was the access and making sure that, you know, in our community, they had the vaccine. In addition to that, we've worked with a consultant that does work for Sandera. And they have conducted a poll as well to get, you know, opinions about folks being hesitant. And it is, it also aligns as well. And then the third instance is, is that our, we have those seven contractors that as they are working, a part of their job is also to do a needs assessment in a specific area. And so that is information that they're going to continuously share with our office. So I think what would probably be helpful is if we, you know, kind of pull that together and be able to kind of bring it back and speak to it. Because it definitely aligns. And so if we were to look at that 15%, I think talking to our partners about kind of who specifically is within that 15% is kind of where we're landing. And being able to do that more targeted type vaccine strategies, where we can actually provide the education as well as the vaccines. And so that has been done quite a bit, not, you know, directly by Austin Public Health, but it has been done.
Well, that's great. That is really very helpful and sharing that information would be very much appreciated. I would love to see it, I know others would too. Do, and, you know, whoever does it, it doesn't necessarily have to be APH. But I am curious about the extent of the city that is covered in those. I do think those polls are important, but I would want to understand if they were, you know, neighborhood-specific or if they were a particular population-specific. Because I think we need that kind of data all over the city. And so if we don't have it available for the city as a whole, then I think that that might, there might be some places that that needs to be filled in. So that we can, so that we can understand what's going on. So I'd be happy to follow up with you, Dr. Eskot, and with you, Director Hayden Howard, to kind of take a look at that information. I think that would be helpful. So my second question has to do with, again, you know, it's a combination of outreach and education. Have we considered, or have you guys considered using more targeted outreach? We kind of talked about this last time. But so, for example, have you considered using our reverse 911 system to send messages out to people, both to encourage them to get the vaccination and to connect them to how they could get it? So for example, using reverse 911 to send a message out that then tells them who to text? If, as, you know, as Councilmember Fuentes was suggesting, have we activated our reverse 911 system and/or have we considered that?
We have not considered that. That is typically used for emergencies. And one of the things that the Office of Emergency Management has shared with us is wanting to make sure, because what they don't want people to do is, is if it's truly an emergency and they receive too many messages, that they may not, they may overlook an emergency from us. And so I think what we can do is maybe look at another way besides the reverse 911. There may be another strategy. So let me have a conversation with them. I understand, and I know I'm not a communications person, so I try to stay in my lane. I understand that there is another, I think it's called Everbridge or something like that that staff have been able to use. And so let me see if that is something that we could use in lieu of to be able to kind of cast that net. So because I understand what you're saying is to be able to kind of cast a broad net to be able to reach a greater number of folks.
Well, and so thank you. You know, whether it's reverse 911 or comparable kinds of system. But what I'm, you know, what I'm really trying to get at is proactive outreach, which it's targeted. I think that's really important. You know, you could even get to the point where you're sending out a message that's targeted that says, you know, press one if you need a vaccine, press two if you don't. And then keeping track of that in a way that we can know how we're reaching the 65%. Because this is truly an emergency. If we don't get to herd immunity and if we don't really, you know, get our community vaccinated and safe, we're going to have another surge, as Dr. Eskot has said. So I think that that is, we're at the point where we really need to light a fire. I mean, I know everybody's been working very hard, so I don't mean this in a pejorative sense, but we really need to light a fire under our community to get to that extra 15%. My last comment is just for Councilmember Poole, who I believe has had to step away. She asked me to please let folks know that she appreciates their work and wanted to know if we could add to the statistics that are being tracked the rate of reinfections. So that would be in addition to the dashboard. So that's my question that I'm asking for her. Could that be done? Dr. Eskot, do we have data or?
I'll have to get with our Epi team to see the fidelity of that data. We do have that data. We have data on breakthrough infections. So infections in people who have been vaccinated, you know, very, very small number, a few dozen. But I can, I can check with them and certainly if we have good fidelity with that data, we can add that to the presentation.
Okay. And then finally, this is not a question, just a request. If Director Hayden Howard, if you could send to all of us what steps we need to take if we have folks in our community that want to set up some neighborhood events. I think that, you know, many of us would like to be involved in that and are not quite sure what the path is to do that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't think that Councilmember Kelly is with us. I think she was having technical difficulties. Councilmember Poole had to step off, will be joining us at 12:30-ish, I think. That gets us to the Councilmember Ellis. And Councilmember Ellis has disappeared here momentarily. Let's go to Councilmember Tovo, and then we'll come back.
Thanks very much. I just have one really quick question. I think we've covered a lot of ground here today on the questions from staff, I mean, from my colleagues. Given, given what Mayor Portem Harper-Madison was talking about before, about the connection, the really good possibilities of connecting with events, I wondered if there were any plans underway for a pop-up event associated with the half marathon this weekend.
Well, Austin Public Health has, is not, is not signed up to be at that event. I, I can't speak for any other providers, but that is not on our radar. Our staff will be at their typical locations, providing vaccines as well as the Catholic big Vietnamese church this weekend.
Okay, thank you. Well, I look forward to, also to the information that Councilmember Kitchen suggested. I think that would be very useful if, if there was a bit of a template for, for how we can get, how and to whom we should get information about events we know of that might be good connections. And to the extent that you require assistance from our offices, how we might provide that, what the best way to plug in is.
Okay.
And Dr. Esco, let me just say, you, you created a lot of joy in our house when you announced that May might be an approval for vaccines for under 12. In fact, I think that news is now making its way around the middle school circuit. So, thanks.
Always a pleasure, Councilmember.
Councilmember Alter. Reps, may I hang on one second? Councilmember Ellis is back with us. Paige, are you there?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to ask my question again. Sorry about that. With some of the mobile vaccines, do they go directly to you and call public health, or do they need to go to the community partners? And I'm, I'm asking this also in what it seemed like was Councilmember Kitchen and Councilmember Poole's line of thinking is that we could be very helpful in organizing a concentrated district aid effort, knowing where our foundation communities are, where our mobile home communities are, and those who are housebound that may not be able to access bus service. So is that something that they should just call you? Or is that something that we could try to navigate on the fly and try to kind of gather volunteers and try to do something hyper-local like that? What would be the best approach to do something like that?
Well, typically with Austin Public Health, whenever we are attending any type of event, you know, we, we send out a, a link to folks for them to make the request for Austin Public Health to be there. And so that's the same process. And so that's what I would share for you all. So I'll get that information to you all to share that. I think in addition to that, you know, if, if you have folks that are, are homebound, that are not able to come in for vaccines, just ask them to call 311. Our team will, will call them and schedule an appointment and, and go provide the vaccine. I think the really good thing now about the homebound vaccines is, is that they're asking questions about anyone else in the home. Last week, they were able to, you know, provide multiple people in the home a vaccine. So went out to do an elderly lady, 91 years of age, and then we're able to provide a couple of other vaccines. And so our staff will be asking those questions as well of the folks in the household.
That's, that's really great to hear. And if, if there's any way to share information, I know obviously there can't be detailed information about people reaching out to you, but some people may be calling you, some people may be calling us. And it would be helpful if we could help kind of merge this data and figure out if it is appropriate for us to try to do a targeted pop-up for, for a set number of individuals in, in my district, just so we know how to access that. I'm more than happy to try to find physicians to assist. And I, I think we could really make this work well and get more people vaccinated. If there's any information you can share with my office about how that's going or what type of requests you're getting, we'd love to be of help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Alter.
Thank you. I'll be real quick. I was just curious what our plans are for when the vaccine rolls out to this younger set of residents. You know, it's just a different thing when you're vaccinating children and, you know, that process. And, you know, do we have a sense of how many people that is? And just like a greater sense of the plans for that and how APH will be involved if we mostly have Moderna shots?
Uh, Councilmember, I, I don't have a, a specific number for, for 12 to 16-year-olds or 12 to 15-year-olds. It's probably going to be somewhere near a quarter of that 250,000 that are in that under 16 age group. It'll be a lot of, lot of people. As you pointed out, APH only has a Moderna vaccine. So I think the heavy lift is really going to be on the pharmacies, the clinics, Cota, for instance, that, that has Pfizer, as well as our Shots for Tots Clinic. We, you know, I would anticipate that for our Shots for Tots Clinic, we would request Pfizer for those sites because it is already oriented for that younger audience. But we have spoken to our superintendents about it. We've spoken to them about the anticipated timeline and the need to have ongoing coordination on, on how to roll that out and get those vaccinations out efficiently for those middle schools, middle schoolers and high schoolers. I anticipate that school districts are going to, to be more heavily engaged at that phase, but we're still working through those plans.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, Commissioner Gomez, I, I promise you that next week we'll do a better job of limiting ourselves to just one question. And I turn the gavel back to you.
Thanks so much. And thank you, Dr. Esco, and thank you, Director Hayden, as well, for your reports this week. So let's, let's move forward. Let's try to get more people vaccinated. Thanks very much. And so now we'll, we'll call back the Commissioners' Court. We will adjourn this session. And, and then, Mayor?
City Council participation in the joint meeting is adjourned here at 11:02. Out to the Commissioners' Court. Again, thank you so much for letting us do this with you. And thanks to Dr. Esco and Director Hayden Howard. Five-minute break, guys, and then we'll see you at the work session on the other channel. Richard Gomez.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.